What do you mean, at a seven o'clock, and they call Maple Plain City? It's a public tour on Monday, January twenty-fourth. Can you stand and join us in the question of the evening?
Public leaders to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, the individual, for their duty and justice for all.
I am looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Move by Councilmember Francis, second by Councilmember Birak, all in favor of adopting the agenda as is. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. First item of business this evening is visitors to be heard. Is there anyone here to speak for a public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our next item of business, which is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening includes council workshop meeting minutes from December ninth, council special meeting, the administrative review from December tenth, council workshop meeting minutes from December sixteenth, council business meeting minutes from December sixteenth, council swearing in meeting minutes from January sixth, council workshop minutes from January seventh, council workshop meeting minutes from January thirteenth, the 2025 pay equity study, the purchase of a fire Tahoe from the capital budget for fifteen thousand dollars, approval of the fire department lighting project, approve the chambers recording device, and gambling permit for pheasants forever. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Councilmember Birak.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Francis. Any further discussion or questions regarding any of the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted. Items A through L, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Next item of business this evening to come before us is accounts payable, and I'm going to turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Our city bills came to a total of one hundred twenty-three thousand five dollars and seventeen cents. The city ACHs were at one hundred and one thousand two seventy-seven eighty-one, for a grand total of two twenty-four, two eighty-two ninety-eight. One question that did get asked from a few of you was the overage in police administration under miscellaneous. That covered the public safety aid that we sent to WIPs. So it has to get coded, so we put it under miscellaneous, so that's why it shows the overage there.
And that was a one-time aid, just to clarify, so everyone knows that. Any other questions regarding accounts payable? Okay, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve the city checks and the city ACH.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Arvizo.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Councilmember Birak. Any further discussion or questions regarding any of the accounts payable? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. This evening for our staff reports, it is our quarterly update, so we are fortunate to have all of our staff present with us. We will begin tonight hearing from our fire chief, Chief Dennison.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Glad to be here tonight to see everyone. You have in your packets included, I think, a copy of both my fourth quarter report for the year end of December twenty twenty-four, and then also a complete year-end report as well. And in the fourth quarter reporting, it just indicates that the last quarter of twenty twenty-four, we responded to thirty-nine calls for service, thirty-three of those being EMS-related calls, a couple of motor vehicle crashes, and then a couple other, again, good intent calls that you can see in your report. And overall, for the year of twenty twenty-four, we had a total of three hundred and seventy calls for service, which is the highest number of calls that we've had on the fire department ever in our history. I'm not saying that's a good thing. I'm saying that's a trend that I know that we've all been talking about in some different circles and whatnot, but I think it's something to bring out. A couple of things that I wanted to just bring out about the year-end report as well is one of the statistics that I looked at that I brought up to our firefighters in our first January business meeting was I took all of the call percentages for all the firefighters that responded to calls, totaled them up and came up with an average of forty and a half percent, which is awesome. For having twenty members on the fire department and having an average call response of forty percent, it's great. Again, with twenty members on the fire department, I also looked at, and we average about seven firefighters per call out, so when we go to call. So that means from those calls that we have in the middle of daytime where there's maybe only three or four of us around, to those calls from nine to ten o'clock at night, which is our highest, and we have about twelve people respond. Again, our average turnout is about seven firefighters per call. So I know we have a lot of their staff reports. I wouldn't stand for any questions of either one of my reports if anybody has any.
Any questions for Chief Dennison? Thank you to you and your staff, and just a reminder to all of you now that all of our firefighters are paid on call and do have other jobs. So we do appreciate all of you and your commitments to answer that page anytime.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
Next staff report will be from West Hennepin Public Safety Director, Director Crails.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and council members. Included in your packet is the activity report for December twenty twenty-four for West Hennepin Public Safety. We ended the year with four thousand seven hundred and seven incident complaints. And throughout, through, for the month of December, a hundred and thirty of them were in Maple Plain and two hundred and twenty-five in Independence. For the year since we're in December, thirteen hundred and twenty-four were in Maple Plain, and two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four were in the city of Independence. I'll highlight a few cases for you, and as always, feel free to ask any questions you may have about any of the items mentioned. We had a fire, a vehicle fire, December second, fifty-four hundred block of Highway twelve in Maple Plain, Nutradine parking lot there. The vehicle was on fire in the parking lot. Talked to the owner of the vehicle. He noticed his dash light started blinking, so he smelled something burning, pulled into the parking lot, and the fire department arrived and put out the vehicle fire, they did a great job on that. We had a medical on December seventh in the five thousand block Oak Circle in Maple Plain, dispatched to a fall, head injury. We arrived and found a very heavily intoxicated male that had fallen down and hit his head, and had a laceration to his arm. He was over a point two-five on a preliminary breath test, and he was taken to the hospital by North Paramedics. We had an arrest on December fifteenth, Highway twelve in Baker Park Road in Maple Plain. It was a vehicle in the ditch call. We responded to the scene and spoke to the driver, who displayed several signs of impairment. He was very uncooperative, noncompliant, refused all testing, and ultimately was transported to Hennepin County Jail, where he was charged with DWI refusal. And then lastly, we just had a medical on the December twenty-eighth, forty-eight hundred block at Drake Drive, Maple Plain. Just a resident had fallen down and needed assistance getting up. Arrived on scene, found the patient kind of laying on the bottom of the stairs. We were concerned that he'd fallen down the stairs, but that was not the case. He was uninjured, he was lifted to his feet, and he was ultimately transported to the hospital. I kind of ended on that one, as you know, we've been having some discussions about how many falls and lift assists that have been kind of occurring in the past three, four months. So it's just kind of a trend that seems to be happening more and more, falls and lift assists. So be happy to answer any questions that you have in regards to the report.
Any questions for the chief? Well, we'd be remiss to not mention that this will be your last staff report as our Director of Public Safety, since we do those quarterly. We know that you are still with us for the next three months, and you're going to continue to give a hundred and ten percent. But we just want to thank you for your leadership and dedication, and just being a great partner and a great leader for all of us, so thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next staff report this evening is from our City Engineer, Bolden Amink, Mr. Martini.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Our staff report is in your packet. Actually, pretty quiet time right now if you compare it to last year at this time, where we were really just starting to get into the street reconstruction with some of the public engagement and getting into plans. This year, winter's going to be a little quieter. A lot of what we have going on is in associating, association with your planner with some of the reviews of development-type things that are going on around town. There's some development review that we've been doing on the south side of Gateway Boulevard. Some improvements being considered on Wyman at the old Gateway or the Haven Homes site that we've been reviewing. Still cleaning up some and monitoring punch list items for Baker Trail, Baker Trail Villas. Some home construction that we're reviewing, creating plan for. Also, T-Mobile's removing some equipment from your water tower that we've been tracking, and making sure everything is going according to plans there. Also, some correspondence with your Uniform Park signage that you've been discussing, and then some other things, again, just in coordination with Mark. We had a workshop tonight, talked more in detail about the wellhead protection plan. I won't go into details on that, but all of that working towards a submittal to the Department of Health in May, so that work is ongoing. And then as far as the street goes, since the public hearing, just some cleanup work, some questions that have come in related to the assessments that have been working with Jacob on addressing those. Not so much anymore, but while the weather was still a little nicer, you're monitoring the condition of the project, still punch list items that were coming in from residents and things that we were putting together since things got closed up for the winter. And then ultimately, this spring, we'll be looking to complete the final punch list items, put the final lift pavement on the whole project, and also the mill and overlay portion on the Howard Avenue cul-de-sac. Be completed at that time as well. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for engineer? While it might not feel as busy, there's a lot going on, so thank you for paying attention to all those details and keeping us moving. All right, next report will be from Public Works, People Service, Mr. Halflock.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Just for my report, I'll do what I have done in the past, just going over a few goals from the last quarter, and then a few more for the next quarter. Some of the goals we had this last quarter were to insulate and paint the well health number three, that was recommended by the Department of Health. And we've gotten that started, and we will have it done by the end of the week. We started it last week, and then working on replacing more chemical feed parts to reduce the issues at the water treatment plant. And that's kind of more of an endless effort, but we did get a couple injectors, pump head, and replaced, replaced for the chemical side. And then we do have a few other things that we will get done for summertime here. Then setting up the sewer jetting and televising for the year. G-mails are out, we've gotten one quote back, waiting for a few more, and then you'll see them, I'm sure. And then working with Jacob on setting up a water and sewer budget for next year, and we have a meeting on Friday for that. And for the next quarter, I put down just to complete the annual water use and water conservation reports for the DNR, revise the lead and copper site plan for the Department of Health, work on tree trimming and grass restoration towards the end of the quarter in the parks, and collect road patching bids for some of the bad areas and spots where we still need to have patched for main breaks and storm sewer repairs. And as previous quarter reports, continue valve exercising, manhole inspections, and setting up more water meter changeouts to slowly transition over to the new meters. And coming up here soon, we'll get a backflow preventer failed at the water treatment plant that we've been waiting on back order parts for, which will be big because we'll be saving fifteen thousand gallons a week with that fixed. And get the road restrictions, road, spring road restrictions signs up and down, and then get the furnace at Rainbow Park replaced. That's all I have, so with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Halflock? All right, just thank you for all the extra work, especially I know the furnace at Rainbow Park has been quite challenging, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next we will hear from our City Planner, Mr. Pultus.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. The last month we've had. Was it on?
Does that push?
Oh, now it is. Oh, I didn't see the red, that's what I was looking for.
Red, you're on, red, you're hot.
Got it. The last month or so, we've been working on a couple of projects. We've got some new development that's looking to come into town, as well as one of the items you're going to hear tonight that was reviewed at the Planning Commission as it relates to the fifty-eight thirty-nine Highway twelve project. We continue to work on downtown redevelopment. We've had some recent activity on that that we're working through, trying to bring to the EDA and Council ultimately either one or multiple proposals for the redevelopment of that site to consider, and hoping that that comes forward here shortly. The other projects that we are working on that we'll see in March most likely at the Planning Commission, the fifteen twenty Wyman Building is back in, in application state with us, and we've been reviewing that application for the reuse of that building. And then we have a Gateway property that is also looking for new development, and that we anticipate also coming forward. So there's a couple of projects that are, that are out there, as well as some of the old projects that downtown that we're still trying to push forward on and bring forward. So happy to answer any questions or go over any of the projects I've mentioned in the report or tonight.
All right, next we'll hear from Administrator Kohlander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We are full speed ahead with the twenty twenty-four audit right now. Fieldwork is scheduled with the auditors for the week of February tenth. We are also in the process with Civic Plus to create the new website. Right now, they're working on transferring data from our old website over to the new one. We have a tentative goal live date in March twenty twenty-five. And that will be a change from mapleplain.com to mapleplainmn.gov, as required by state law for cities to change that over by twenty twenty-six. So we're just a little ahead of the game. We are also in the works of bringing all of our permits and licensing to an online format. That is hopefully going to go live probably about the same time as our website, so we're looking forward to that. And then just one other thing. We had approved Scanning America to come in and take all of our documents, to scan them in. They took a hundred and ten boxes, two totes, four boxes of rolled blueprints, and fifteen flat drawers of maps. So they left with a truckload. So we're very excited to have them get that scanned in for us. Right now, the records room is empty.
And it's looking awesome in the office, those metal file cabinets are gone, the big drawers, it's.
Yes. So then, as part of the Administration Finance Report, I have Julie from ABDO to give our fourth quarter financial update.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So I'll present the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four financial report. One thing to keep in mind is this is unaudited information. As was mentioned, we are in preparation for the twenty twenty-four audit that will occur in a few weeks. So there will still be adjustments to these numbers, but these are preliminary. Page three of the financial report focuses on cash and investments. The top chart on this page summarizes the checking and investments in total. In total, the cash and investments for the city increased about one point five million dollars over December of twenty twenty-three. The second chart on this page breaks out those investments into the three major categories of investments that the city holds, which are money markets, brokered CDs, and bonds. So again, same totals, just broken out and presented differently. Page four of the report is a graph showing the cash trends for the general fund. This shows twenty twenty-four as compared to twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two. We like to focus on the trends of cash using this graph. You'll see spikes in June and July and December as a result of the property tax settlements being received by the city. Overall, you know, cash is down a little bit from where it has been the last two years, partially as a result of some of the large projects that have been going on, but trends, trend lines are matching. Page five of this report shows the treasury yields. This is just provided for informational purposes, so you can look at what those yields have been over the last three years. On page six, we look at the budget-to-actual comparison for the general fund. Here we are comparing end of year twenty twenty-four as presented here to the twenty twenty-four budget, and this would be the full-year budget. Some of the major items to note here in looking at the right side of that page. Number one is licenses and permits. There's variance here due to the new revenue source of rental permits. And then we have revenue for liquor licenses that will actually, as a result of audit entries, be moved out because that is twenty twenty-five revenue. Interest earnings are up from where we expected them to be during the budget preparation for twenty twenty-four, and that's as a result of the investment work that Jacob's been doing, as well as the market. Miscellaneous revenues are over budget for the year, and that is due to a large refund from the fire partnership as a result of reviewing that fire partnership contract. Looking at the expenditure section, the executive line item is over budget as a result of purchasing smart boards, the council dais, but those were offset by ARPA funds, so those ARPA funds you'll see in revenue. Number five is public works. This variance is due to increased engineering and mowing costs. Number six is highway, streets, and roads. The variance here is due to timing of street maintenance costs. Number seven is parks. The variance here is due to the scheduled annual maintenance of parks and playgrounds and mulch replacement. The transfers out, number eight. There was an unbudgeted transfer of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. The council did previously approve a resolution for that transfer, and that was for park donations. There's also an unbudgeted transfer for street overlay expenses. Looking at page eight of the report, this shows the cash and investments by fund. So we review cash investments in total, and then we look at it by fund to see if there are any, you know, trends that we need to look into further. The intergovernmental revenue fund, this was where we were tracking those ARPA funds, and I believe it was in December, council approved use of all of the ARPA, so we have now transferred that money out of that fund. The twenty twenty-four A debt service fund, which is number two on this page, it was zero last year. We issued that debt this year, so we now have cash sitting in that fund. Number three, the park improvement fund. This was due to various donations that the city received from Orno Rotary, Westonka J.C.'s, and then some of those transfers that we previously discussed. The capital improvement projects fund, this variance is due to interest rates and the transfer of ARPA revenue. The twenty twenty-four street reconstruction fund, this cash has increased as a result of that bond issue as well. We'll discuss the water fund when we review the revenue and expense variances in that water fund, but the majority of this change was due to multiple water main breaks and sealing of well number two. We'll also review the sewer fund when we look at the revenues and expenses, but the majority of the variance here was due to higher sewer sales and just increased fees or the increased rates for sewer for twenty twenty-four. The stormwater CIP, this fund also had a variance, and that's just due to the timing of the budgeted transfers between the stormwater operating fund and the stormwater CIP fund. And then the fire fund, the majority of this variance in cash was due to capital purchases of the Ranger and the related accessories. On page ten of the report, this is showing the detailed cash and investments for the city. So if you're interested in the specific investments the city holds, this is where that is summarized. And then page eleven, if you like to see more graphical information, that same cash and investment information is in graphical format here. The bar graph on the upper left shows the investments by maturity, and the pie chart at the bottom shows the distribution of that cash and investments across the investment types. Page twelve of this report is the fire fund. This is looking at the fire partnership fund, the operating and the capital portions of that fund. Variances here to be reviewed include intergovernmental revenue. There was training reimbursement awarded to this fund in the fourth quarter that was not anticipated. There was a redistribution done, so increased revenue there. In the expenditures, operating supplies, we have a variance due to just lower purchases of medical supplies than we had anticipated. Fire supplies, we did some coding changes this year to correct and classify things more appropriately, so we moved radio rentals to this line item. Number four on this page, uniforms. The variance here is due to just less equipment and gear purchases. There was a large purchase last year, or twenty twenty-three. And then equipment, again, is the purchase of that Ranger and the related equipment for that. And then miscellaneous, as I mentioned, the refunds issued to Maple Plain and Independence as a result of contract review, so that expense has increased. Page fourteen, we review the water fund. Overall, charges for services this year are lower than last year, and that's related to the Baker Park connection fees at the end of twenty twenty-three. Intergovernmental revenue is increased over twenty twenty-three. Intergovernmental revenue is increased over twenty twenty-three as a result of a, um, Department of Health grant as well as the ARPA funds. Special assessments, um, are increased over last year just as a result of timing of those special assessments coming in. And then interest is increased as a result of the favorable market. Um, operating costs in the expenditure section are increased as a result of, um, Met Council payments. The graph at the bottom of this page outlines the revenues. You can see those revenue trends year over year with the water fund. Looking at the sewer fund on page eight, um, sixteen, um, the special assessment revenue is the only line item to note here. And again, that's a result of just timing of receipt of special assessments. And the sewer fund revenue, um, trend lines look right in line with the last two years. Page eighteen is the stormwater fund. Again, special assessment revenues, um, are increased as a result of timing of those receipts, and interest revenue, um, is a result of the investment market. And then in the expenditures, the operating line item, um, is under budget as a result of timing of payments to, uh, the watershed. The remainder of this report is the detailed revenues and expenditures for all funds that the city has. And I will take any questions that you may have.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by council member Francis.
I'll second it.
Second by council member Arizio. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries four to zero. Next, we'll move on to new business. Um, first item before us tonight is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one two seven dash zero one, the annual designations. I'm gonna turn that over to Administrator Colander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this is a yearly resol- resolution that we do at the first business meeting of every year. Kind of goes through and spells out, um, our fee schedule, our committee assignments, our meeting dates, um, you know, who we use as a bank, attorney, et cetera, et cetera. Um, some of the things just to point out, um, for the fee schedule adjustments, um, we are raising the es- special assessment search fee from twenty dollars to thirty-five dollars. This is when title companies call and say, hey, we need information on assessments. Um, that takes time, uh, staff time to do that, so we're gonna raise that fee. Um, the T H C dispensary registration fee, uh, we are setting at five hundred dollars. Um, this is after an application goes through the Office of Cannabis Management, and then they would, uh, register with the city, um, at that time of registration is when that five hundred dollar fee would be incurred. Um, we are revising the fee structure for the building permit application. Um, in years past, it has been set that it's a hundred dollar fee, uh, but that gets, um, deducted from the total amount. Um, we are changing it so it is a hundred dollar flat fee, um, and that doesn't go towards the amount of the evaluation that's on top of, because it takes a lot of time, um, to process those applications. Um, and then just, uh, administrative clarification, uh, certification for delinquent bills. Now, we'll explicitly include a ten percent interest rate applied at the county level. I think that's about the gist of it. I will stand for any questions.
Any questions regarding the designations? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one two seven dash zero one, the annual designations.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Birac.
I'll second.
Second by Arizio. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries four to zero. Next item of business before us this evening is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one two seven dash zero two, a conditional use permit for Chopper Sports, and I'm gonna turn that over to, um, our city planner, Mr. Kaltis.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council. Uh, this item's coming before you after being considered by the Planning Commission at their December Planning Commission meeting, and it's a request for a conditional use permit to allow automobile sales on the property located at fifty-eight thirty-nine Highway twelve. The applicant, Chopper City LLC, recently purchased the existing business there and then that property from the previous owner, and at that time, they had come forward to the city asking the city if we would sign off on the Minnesota Department of Public Safety vehicle, vehicle dealer license, um, that is required for them to sell, uh, recreational vehicles and other, other things like trailers and, and that, um, the other things they sell there. And we reviewed the, um, city's file relating to that and noted that the property was zoned I-one industrial. It had previously been zoned I-two industrial, uh, but it was zoned I-two industrial prior to the time that the business located on that property. With that, um, we noted that automobile sales were a conditional use, and just for clarification, for the council, our ordinance designates automobile or defines automobile sales, and then it goes on to a long list of recreational vehicles, trailers, um, et cetera, et cetera. So they fall underneath that. And so with that, I had, um, let the new owners know that we wouldn't be able to sign off on their, uh, vehicle dealer license, uh, application as being a approved use until such time as they would come forward and, um, apply for a conditional use. So that's, there's a little bit of a, um, kind of after the fact or retrofit, knowing that that property had been used for recreational sales for some time. With that said, uh, they did make application to the city. The city reviewed the application, brought forward that application to the Planning Commission and held a public hearing. Uh, Planning Commission reviewed the application, uh, discussed really all aspects of the app- application, but ultimately, um, made a recommendation to the city council to consider approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions that, um, were provided with, within the staff report, now provided in your resolution. And I'll just touch on a couple of things that the Planning Commission talked about. Um, with the subject site, they have, uh, an existing showroom building, then they have an existing service shop, uh, located on the property, and they have a vehicle display area and then really an outdoor storage area. And so with the Planning Commission discussion, a couple of the things that we talked about was, one, uh, more clearly delineating the vehicle display areas from the outdoor storage area on the approved plan. More for documentation than anything else. Planning Commission also discussed that the parking areas that are provided for both customer and employee parking for the showroom should be clearly delineated by, uh, striping, so just striping the pavement, uh, to show where the parking spaces would be located. And then, um, Planning Commissioners had quite a bit of a discussion regarding the site lighting, noting that the lighting that currently exists, both on the building and then that lights up the outdoor vehicle display area, does not comply with current ordinance standards, and recommended that a condition be included that would require the applicant to, um, bring the lighting up to standard on the showroom building and then on the, uh, parking lot building. It was noted that, I believe, the parking lot lighting can be, um, adjusted. Right now, it's angled up, but they had at some point recently replaced those fixtures, and I think if they just were to go to a ninety-degree downcasting position, uh, they could comply. And then the showroom lighting, though, is a little bit different. That lighting currently is not a cutoff-type fixture, and there's a couple of lights on the building that would have to be swapped out to a shoebox-type lighting in order to comply. With all those, uh, with that conversation, discussion, and then the, um, recommendation, Planning Commission did recommend approval to the city council for the conditional use permit. I'm happy to go into as much or as little detail as you would like, so I'll stand for questions.
Any questions? I think the report is really detailed and planning did a great job as well, so. All right, hearing no questions, I am looking for a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one two seven dash zero two, the conditional use permit for Chopper, um, Sports.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arizio.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Birac. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries four to zero. Uh, next for new business, we have ordinance three three three, the franchise agreement with Midco, and I will turn that over to its Administrator Colander.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, we've discussed this, uh, once or twice now. Um, Midco is looking to come in and put fiber throughout the city. Um, this ordinance, number three three three, establishes a fifteen-year non-exclusive franchise agreement between Maple Plain and Midcontinent Communications, also known as Midco. Uh, this is for the construction, operation, repair, and maintenance of the fiber optic cable. Um, this agreement grants Midco access to public ways, grounds for these activities while prescribing regulations on service standards, public safety, insurance, indemnification, and so forth. Um, it also poses a franchise fee of five percent of Midco's annual gross revenue from cable services. Um, and that is outlined, uh, in this document. Um, for confidentiality purposes, the rates are not posted. Um, so we are excited about this opportunity for another service provider to come into our city. Um, they are well-known for putting money into the community as well. Um, so I look for approval of ordinance three three three.
Um, before that, we go for that motion, I would just like to note, um, as it's been asked by some of the residents, that this is another option. This is not the only option. So we are not saying you have to go with Midco. This is just another option for our residents, for our neighbors, to have choices. So I just want to clarify that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve ordinance three three three, the franchise agreement with Midco.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Arizio, second by Birac. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving ordinance three three three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries four to zero. Next item of business this evening is council reports and other business. Um, council member Birac, do you want to kick us off?
Sure, I'll kick us off. Um, started this month out with fire commission, started out with that, um. You know, there's a few meetings this month, kind of a lighter month. But one thing I do want to touch base on is, on Christmas Day, I was working with a fire department, working a structured fire. That whole thing has been no more with everything going on with our society today. But one thing it does bring up is the call to serve. And working that structured fire on Christmas, seeing five other fire departments sacrifice their Christmas to help a local business. And with the police or the fire chief, with twenty, uh, firefighters on the fire department, the call to serve for our community can be done anywhere. With fire department up on council, getting involved, planning commission, let's serve your community because it truly gives you something back to help your local community. That's just where I wanted that one at.
Thank you for that reminder and thank you for your commitment to serve. Council member Francis?
Okay, so, um, there was changes in some of the committee assignments. So I started Rotary beginning of January. I've attended two meetings, and it's a very ambitious group. Look forward to spending more time with them and getting more involved in service projects out in the community. Um, I attended West Hennepin Chamber and got to hear all about, uh, Mayor Emeritus Marvin Johnson and how he got started in politics. It all started with a phone call in the dairy barn. So it's an interesting story if you haven't read it yet. Um, attended workshops, and now tonight's business meeting, rebranding met earlier today, and we're getting to the final stages of our new city logo. Um, so it's started, month started off slow, but it's finished with a lot of meetings.
Thank you, Councilmember Francis. And Councilmember Arizio, you are very new and welcome, and I know it's been a baptism by fire, and, um, I'm not sure you've been to any official meetings yet this month.
No.
Okay, well, we just want to thank you for being here, and, um, I know you've, all of council has been very involved. We had the special meeting with the swearing-in, we had the L M C training to work on code of conduct and a workshop. So we li- literally have, um, two workshops have literally thrown you in, so. Um, and also just want to give you, if you did want to say anything, I didn't want to just skip over you.
No, but I'll have a nice report next month.
Okay, sounds good. Well, welcome, and we're glad you're here. Um, it, as been noted, it has been a new year. We kicked off the new year right away with the Highway Twelve Safety Coalition, continuing to working, um, for safer roads and advocating, um, out here for permanent fixes and continuing to work together with our neighbors on that. Um, also Northwest Hennepin League municipalities, we started our year in January with all the new mayors coming on, doing some onboarding, getting to know one another. Um, talked about ways that, um, we can serve and just welcoming, welcoming, um, new neighbors and networking and things going on in our communities. Um, in the police department, we've been busy, the, we had a part-time police officer interview. Um, that is moving forward in the process, so we're grateful for those part-time officers to help our full-time officers. As Councilmember Francis alluded to, Rotary has kicked off, we are in full swing. We are currently planning for Party in the Park, which is June seventh, looking for volunteers. So if you have any interest in that, please reach out to myself or Councilmember Francis. Our regional council on mayors, um, we talked about building the next area, era of our region and mega trends. So that was a very interesting meeting. Uh, Chamber, oh, it was just a great talk, um, as Councilmember Francis alluded to. Uh, Mayor Emeritus Johnson just had the floor and just shared, um, from his heart and just lots of words of wisdom and, um, just an incredible man and leader, so grateful for that opportunity to hear him and for him to share. Um, Police Commission's been busy, we've been doing a lot of succession planning. This week will be especially busy with, um, we have another Police Commission meeting, we have interviews, um, for Director of Public Safety, and lots going on. Fire Commission's been busy, excited to see that we're gonna have a new Tahoe for the chief and, uh, working on potential fire merger and just providing public safety, um, for our residents. Rebranding soon will be coming forward to the community, um, as Councilmember Francis alluded to, and, um, looking for input and feedback on that, so watch for that. And then just want to remind everyone, um, Thursday afternoon, evening between five and eight, everyone has been invited on behalf of the City of Independence to come and say farewell and thank you, um, to Mayor Marvin Johnson for his forty-five years of service. And we would just be remiss in Maple Plain to not acknowledge, um, we would not be where we are today without him and, um, without his leadership, without his collaborative spirit, um, truly wanting what is best for the entire area and, uh, never once solely focused on independence, always on what can be done for everyone. And, um, our public safety would not be what it is today, um, without Mayor Johnson. So, um, just want to publicly acknowledge him and thank him for that, and make sure that if you're available, please stop by, um, the Marvin Johnson Community Room on Thursday between five at and eight at the Independence City Hall to say hello and thank you and enjoy cake and coffee. Um, with that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Francis.
Second.
Second by Birac, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries four to zero, the meeting's adjourned at seven fifty P M.